One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment now to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you might have with you that might make some kind of noise and obstruct the meeting. Thank you very much. Copies of tonight's agenda are available in print here in the front of the room for anybody who would like one, and the entire information packet for the council meeting is available online for those of you who wish to take a look at them prior to the meeting. We have a guest tonight, but we'll get to that in just a moment. First, we will consider the approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Turn this.
We have minutes from the meeting of September 9th, and we have a motion to approve from Mr. Dayhoff and a second from Mr. Cavaci. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is...
Mr. President, just a reminder, we need to amend the agenda.
Yes, I was about to do that. I thought we would do that in just a moment. Thank you. We'll do that in just a moment, but first, I wanted to let the mayor do this presentation. This is probably one of the most fun things the mayor gets to do during his term, so I will turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to read this proclamation we have here. Once again, our wonderful county and the city of Westminster have Miss Maryland...I don't know how we keep making Miss Maryland what we do.
It's the water.
That took a turn. That's a political issue here, so if you follow the paper. So, all right, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Whereas Caitlin Dupuy, a native of Westminster, Maryland, competed for and won the title of Miss Allegheny County in 2019, and Miss Dupuy subsequently competed in Miss Maryland 2019 pageant and was crowned Miss Maryland on June 22nd, 2019. Whereas Miss Dupuy studied graphic design and studio art at Liberty University, earning an undergraduate degree in May 2019. And whereas Miss Dupuy plans to utilize the scholarship money from her Miss Maryland win to pursue a graduate degree at the Savannah College of Art and Design once she finishes her duties as Miss Maryland and Miss Dupuy. Miss Dupuy's platform is common sense, spelled C-E-N-T-S, to be clear, promoting youth financial literacy. And Miss Dupuy is passionate about the introduction and promotion of financial literacy to youth at an early age. And Miss Dupuy wrote, illustrated, and published a children's book entitled Pete and Penny Penguin Learn Common Sense, also spelled with a C, which she reads to elementary school students in her travels as Miss Maryland. And like other Miss America contestants, Miss Dupuy works to raise money and awareness of children's miracles in her hospitals. And December 2019, Miss Dupuy will represent our great state of Maryland at the Miss Maryland 2020 pageant, and the city of Westminster, whereas the city of Westminster, Maryland, wishes to recognize Miss Dupuy for her charitable work and her successful pageant career. Now therefore, I, Joe Dominic, Mayor of the city of Westminster, join the members of the common council and the city staff in congratulating Caitlin Dupuy on being crowned Miss Maryland 2019, and encourage the Westminster community to support Miss Dupuy as she participates in the Miss America pageant proclaimed this 23rd day of September 2019.
(applause)
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, can I ask the...
Mr. Cavaci, yes.
So, you were born here?
I was, born and raised in Westminster. I graduated from Westminster High in 2016.
Fantastic.
I'm excited to be able to represent the city that has shaped me into the woman I am today, and the state that has done the same out of this America in December.
We'll be holding for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, we're very excited to have you representing Maryland and Westminster. We've got probably some boring things ahead of us here tonight, which you are not required to stay and listen to. So you're welcome to stay as you would like, but if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to go. Very good, we're happy to have you.
No worries.
Thanks very much. Before we move on to the next presentation, let's make sure we do get the agenda amended. Our city administrator, Ms. Matthews, has asked that we add two items to the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve, amend the agenda to add items B and C to the consent calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's a motion, and a second from Ms. Thomas, sorry, Ms. Gilbert. Is there...sorry, throwback. Are there any concerns, or if not, we will, we want to vote. All those in favor of amending the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the agenda is amended. And now, Ms. Matthews, would you like to present the survey results from your community survey?
Certainly. Thank you very much. Shannon's going to help me out by advancing the slides. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you the results of our 2019 community survey. As you might recall, this project was originally budgeted in fiscal year 2018. Due to workload, it got pushed into fiscal year 2019. Most of the work was done during fiscal year 19, except data collection, so that's why we're presenting it to you now. I wanted to start off just talking a little bit just about the methods that were used to conduct the survey. The survey was conducted by the National Research Center, which is a leading survey research and evaluation firm that focuses on the public sector. They are based out of Boulder, Colorado. The city contracted for what is known as the National Community Survey, and this was developed in, as part of a collaborative effort between the National Research Center, which I'll just refer to NRC for rest of the presentation, and the International City County Management Association. And the goal of the National Community Survey was to provide a standardized way to assure high-quality research methods at an affordable cost, and also to make sure that there were directly comparable questions so that communities could compare their survey results to others across the country. We surveyed, or the National Research Center surveyed, 1,600 households in Westminster. Those 1,600 households were determined using a systematic sampling method, and if you have a lot of interest in that, there's a technical appendices in your agenda packet. That technical report does include a map showing the geographic distribution of those who received the survey, and that's on page 32 of the technical appendices report. Each survey recipient received three separate mailings. Initially, there was a pre-notification postcard, and then they received mailing with the survey, and then they received one follow-up mailing that also included a survey in case they had not filled it out the first time. There was an optional opt-in survey that was available to all city residents. We received 135 responses to that. Those results were provided in a separate report because they are not statistically significant. Essentially, everyone self-selected to participate, so the information that I'm presenting tonight does not include those 135 responses, just to be clear. Shannon? Go ahead. So I wanted to do a little bit more just about the survey methodology. As I mentioned, it could be completed by mail or online. There was about 2% of the surveys that were undeliverable. Basically, they were just returned by the post office, so that left 1,564 possible survey respondents. We received 386 completed surveys. 52 of those were completed online, so that equates to a response rate of 25%. The margin of error was plus or minus 5% in terms of the responses, and the results, which is very common practice, were weighted to reflect the overall community demographics. Shannon, you jumped ahead, I think, one. Yeah. So throughout the presentation, I'm going to referring to national benchmarks, so I wanted to spend a minute or two on that. The benchmark that I'm referring to is the National Research Center's database of the survey results from over 600 communities from across the country, whose residents evaluated the same topics that were addressed in our survey. A complete list of those communities that are included in the National Research Center's database is provided in the technical report, and that's on pages 25 to 29. A comparison was made when at least five communities asked a question that was similar to Westminster's. So to kind of just give you the sort of broad overview before we do a little bit of a deeper dive, these were the key survey findings. Basically, pleased to share with you, nothing that I think you don't know, but our residents enjoy a very high quality of life and have a strong sense of community. One of the things I probably should have mentioned is the survey didn't focus just on services provided by Westminster, so it was geared towards providing a very wide range of questions to see how residents feel about the community they live in. So some of those items are not services that are under the city's jurisdiction. So one of the areas that represents an area of opportunity for just the governmental structure in general had to do with mobility in the area. Public transportation was a particular focus, where we fell below national benchmarks, not surprisingly. And the last key conclusion was that our residents generally feel safe, but they place a high importance on safety as a future focus of the city. I think, Shannon, you might have jumped one, I think. Nope, you didn't. So kind of talking a little bit about kind of overall quality of life, 2/3 of our residents rated the quality of life in the city as excellent or good, which is similar to the national benchmark. The survey basically provided feedback on what the National Research Center refers to as eight facets of community. If you had the opportunity to look in detail at the survey results, those eight facets were a built environment, community engagement, economy, education and enrichment, mobility, natural environment, recreation and wellness, and safety. And as the National Research Center looked at those results, there were certain items that came up. They sometimes refer to them as key drivers, which basically were the items that influenced how people felt about their community. And in our case, the two items that were identified as priorities in the coming two years were safety and economy, and I think that'll become even more clear as I go through the survey results. The survey, for reporting purposes, sort of broke the data down into three separate areas. One was community characteristics, one was governance, and one was participation. So with regard to community characteristics, this refers to the natural ambience, services and amenities that make for an attractive community, and how residents rate these various aspects and their quality of life as an indicator of the overall health of the community. So people who filled out the survey rated over 40 features of the community. Almost all of our ratings were similar to the national benchmark. We did have three ratings that were lower than the national benchmark. And those were the overall feeling of safety in the community, the ease of travel by public transportation, and the openness and acceptance towards people of diverse backgrounds. 75% of the survey respondents rated the city as an excellent or good place to live. 90% indicated that they feel safe in their neighborhoods during the day, and 80% feel safe downtown during the day. Kind of switching to governance, this category measures the overall quality of the services provided by the Westminster government, as well as the manner in which we provide those services. And once again, this is a key factor in how people rate their quality of life in the community. Respondents rated over 30 individual services and amenities in Westminster. Similar to community characteristics, almost all of our ratings were similar to the national benchmark. We had one rating that was higher than the national benchmark and three that were lower than.
Snow removal.
That is correct.
Yeah. We also did well on fire and police.
Yeah, and that's one of the things I was going to mention is, obviously, a lot of the categories were for some of our governmental partners or other nonprofits, and I will be sharing the survey results with them, since they may find them interesting. As Councilmember Dayhoff indicated, we did rate higher than the national benchmark in snow removal. Our ratings that were lower than the national benchmark were crime prevention, bus or transit services, and of all things, drinking water. Not quite sure why. So one of the things that I found interesting about the crime prevention, and did, I had a specific discussion with the National Research Center about this. You know, most of our residents, and we'll get to this momentarily, had not reported a crime or been a victim of crime in the 12 months prior to the survey. As I just mentioned, most of them indicated that they feel safe in their neighborhood or in downtown Westminster, so it sort of begged the question, why did we come in below the national benchmark for crime prevention? In discussing this with the National Research Center, they said most often what they see is it points to a need for greater public information and outreach on what the city is doing to prevent crime. So it's essentially a lack of information that kind of shapes how people feel. For the next category, Shannon, if you want to switch that.
Shannon.
I'm sorry, Shannon, go back one more. So this is a slide I was particularly proud to present. So 75% of our residents rated the overall quality of city services as excellent or good. Seven in 10 gave high marks to the overall quality of customer service provided by our city staff, and both those ratings are similar to the national benchmarks. So participation basically refers to how the community basically harnesses its most valuable resource, its residents. These standards sort of measure the connection and trust among residents, government, businesses, and other organizations, whether there is a shared sense of membership and belonging in the community. So once again, respondents answered a lot of questions. They responded to over 30 activities and behaviors. I'm sure you're getting tired of hearing me say this, but almost all our ratings are similar to the national benchmark. We did have five ratings, however, that were lower than the national benchmark.
But we did really well on five portions of fruits and vegetables.
That's right. So...
I'm not sure what to do with that information.
Well, you know, there are some organizations in town that basically do measure kind of community health, so this probably would be of interest to some, maybe not the city government, but I think some of our governmental partners or nonprofit partners would probably find that information helpful. So the areas...
We should share this information with them. We should make it a point to share this with some of those agencies, maybe.
Yeah. So the ratings where we were lower than the national benchmark, and once again, many of these services are outside of the city's sort of general service purview, but our residents are less likely to use public transportation than drive than across the nation. I think we all know we have a very limited public transportation system here in Carroll County. Our residents are less likely to carpool than to drive alone. They're less likely to use community recreation centers, less likely to read or watch local news, and our residents indicated that they feel more housing cost stress than those across the nation who responded to the same survey. Six in 10 of survey respondents gave favorable marks to the sense of community in Westminster. Seven in 10 would recommend living in Westminster and plan to remain in the city, and once again, both these ratings are very similar to the national benchmark. So the National Community Survey, as I mentioned, is sort of a standardized survey template. There was some, a little bit of flexibility where we could add some questions of our own that were unique to Westminster, so we picked, I worked with city staff, and we picked four areas to explore. One was possible enhancements to the city-owned portion of the Wakefield property. We delved into where do residents get information about city government and our activities. We asked for some feedback about the diversity of downtown businesses, what I thought might be helpful with any kind of economic development efforts. And then we asked residents to weigh in on how they felt about the critical success factors that are in your current strategic plan, thought that would be timely, given that you have a strategic planning session coming up in a little less than a month. So with regard to the Wakefield Valley property, we asked respondents to rate possible enhancements. There were three. One was the reconfiguration or improvement of the trail system, renovation of the existing buildings as community spaces, and we wanted to get their thoughts on the addition of picnic shelters or pavilions. There were high levels of support for all the enhancement options, and I think if Shannon can switch the slide, this will give you an idea. So basically, the far left, the darker purple, were those who expressed strong support for these items, and then the lighter shade, slightly lighter shade, was somewhat supportive. So basically, if you look at those numbers, eight out of 10 survey respondents expressed some level of support for making all three of these enhancements. So, go ahead and switch it, Shannon. Obviously, the part that always comes to play is whether or not people would be willing to pay for any type of improvements. So we did ask, you know, try to gauge that, to say, would you support a tax increase to make these improvements? The level of support at that point fell very, very significantly. If you look at the next slide, basically, the item, there was not majority support for funding any of these improvements, three taxpayer dollars. The highest rated one was improving the trail system, and that only received 25% support if there was any type of funding needed from the community to support that. The renovation of the existing buildings and the addition of the picnic shelters only received 16% support. So the second area that we explored, as I mentioned, was trying to get a sense of where people heard about city government or activities, what was going on. The most widely used source of information were the city website and just word of mouth, talking to other people in the community. The least relied upon were Nextdoor, which is an app, as many of you know, and HOA Communications. So this is kind of split over two slides, in part for readability, but also there was a pretty sharp break between the different sources. So the ones that are up on the screen right now, you know, were somewhere about generally either eight in 10 cited the city website and word of mouth is either a major or minor source for city government news. About seven in 10 cited local media outlets, the city newsletter that goes out in the water bills, and city social media communications. The next slide, basically, everything fell below 50%. So that includes attending mayor and common council meetings, other public meetings of the city, informal interactions with city officials. As I mentioned, the Nextdoor app and homeowner association communications were very, were not rated very highly as sources of information about what we do. So the next area we asked people about was about the existing complement of downtown businesses, what they'd like to see more of, what they feel is sort of at the right tipping point, and maybe what they'd like to see less of. So six out of 10 indicated they would like to see more family-oriented businesses downtown. Almost five in 10 expressed a desire for more cultural and arts-related options and pub or gastropub dining options. And then, Shannon, if you want to switch to the next slide. And then, six out of 10 residents felt like we had the right amount of personal services and professional services. So these are going to be things like hair salons, real estate agencies, and things of that nature. Switching to our strategic plan and the critical success factors, for those who aren't as familiar with those as we all are, those are up on the screen, so they were a safe and livable community, responsible stewardship of city resources, economic activity and growth, water and sewer capacity for future generations, and strong partnerships and an engaged community. So basically, I think the good news is the survey respondents gave a high importance rating to all five of the critical success factors that are in our strategic plan, which to me kind of signaled that we sort of have it right. I think the thing that is most startling, if you look at it, is the first one, which is a safe and livable community. Basically, 79% of survey respondents rated that as an essential focus of our strategic plan, with another 20% rating it as very important. So basically, 99% of survey respondents felt that that was extremely important to focus on as a strategic planning goal. The lowest rated one was strong partnerships and engaged community. There were 43% who rated that as an essential critical success factor, with 44% rating it as very important. Wanted to just mention, we elected to do some customized survey reporting and basically have our survey results broken down by both geographic subgroups as well as demographic subgroups. The city was broken into three parts, as you may have noticed in the survey documents for reporting purposes. So each of the surveys that went out had a geographic code for one of three areas of the cities, and those were tracked for reporting purposes. We also chose to have the results broken down by demographic subgroups, and in some communities, this can make, there can be startling differences in how different areas of the city or different demographic groups feel about the community. In our case, there was no one geographic area of the city that had consistently higher or lower ratings. With regard to the demographic subgroup comparisons, there were certainly differences, but those who were 50, over 55, owned their own homes or lived in detached housing tended to give higher ratings across most facets of the survey. So that's sort of a general theme, but certainly there were some variations depending on the individual category. So I think the question obviously is, what do you do with these survey results now that we have them? So I think the way communities typically use survey results, as I think we all will, is, you know, it's a measure of how we're doing currently and an opportunity to benchmark how we're doing as a community to others across the nation. Cities often use survey results for planning and budgeting purposes. Where do you want to put your limited dollars? As I mentioned, with the crime prevention rating, I think it certainly points to some opportunities to do a better job of communicating with our residents and engaging with them. And then, my experience has been that most community surveys should not be done as a one-time shot. Communities that I've worked in have tended to do these surveys at certain time intervals. I'd probably suggest every three years, and if you do these over time, it's a way to measure whether we're improving over time and whether we're doing a better job to serve our community. Because the survey is standardized and because we have the opportunity to benchmark both to ourselves and as well as to others, you know, we'll just be able to watch as we make efforts to get better what we're doing as a city government, is it making a difference and do our residents see that? So I would recommend that this be something that we do probably every three years. I've worked in some communities that do them religiously every two years. So with that, that's sort of a brief overview. You obviously have lots of reports that you were given. Be happy to answer whatever questions you have.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Matthews?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
More of a comment. I think you, when you saw the poor result for drinking water, my best guess in interpreting that data would have to do more with the fact that, since, you know, we have to pump all of our water out of wells and such here, we don't have the luxury of putting a giant pipe in a big river, a reservoir, like a lot of places, it's going to be more expensive. I think that's absolutely a big part of it. And also, you know, we do, because we're pulling out of wells, we have city water that can be, you know, have a hardness to it. So my guess is that that would be the reason why. Mr. President.
All right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
And, you know, Mr. Mayor, I would probably tap onto that. I think we've been pretty forthright and pretty vocal and open about the challenges that we're facing in terms of its availability, and I take that to also mean that people are hearing that, and they're cognizant of the fact that it's an issue for us. Maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, did it say quality drinking water or availability? What was the question that was asked then?
It just said drinking water.
Yeah. I kind of interpreted that also as a reflection upon, you know, the Times has talked about it numerous times, and a lot online about it, and we've been very vocal about it, which I think that is a good thing. I think that's positive, people hear that and know it's an issue for us, and hopefully it means they'll be supportive of some of the things we're trying to do, in particular, water reuse, which is going to have its challenges for people to accept it. I know most of the people, when I tell them about it, their initial reaction is yuck, but once you kind of start explaining it, they come around.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I would say, and I think this might be a demographic difference, but most of the people that I talk to about it say, that's neat.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I just, I would like to say that I think most people I talk to that are maybe a millennial like myself are more open to the idea of water reuse, so it seems just...
Completely agree, Mr. Mayor.
We probably have different experiences with that.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely spot on.
Yeah, I think, you know, I get a mixed reaction depending on who I'm talking to. I think it's, you know, one thing I don't get is people who say, no way. Why on earth do that? So, you know, I'm hopeful that we will, you know, with a good campaign to explain this and inform people about the choices we're making, we'll be, we'll be all aye on that.
But, by the way, Charles, you know...
Older. It's relative.
It is indeed.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yingler.
So, this is really good information with the survey, and I always, as I like to say, refer back to our strategic plan, and we're really taking some initiatives and accomplishing them within our strategic plan, you know, water reuse and then, you know, the buying of some property. So what I've heard in this survey is that we maybe are falling a little bit short on community engagement and communication, which is in our strategic plan, which I'm saying that we are, we are definitely doing better, but I'd say we want to just definitely keep that on our radar. You know, we're having a strategic, we're having a retreat in two weeks. Certainly, let's, let's take a look at that. As I said, you know, we're moving, we're definitely trying to move forward with it, but, you know, based on surveys, it says, okay, well, maybe, what else, what else can we do? So just kind of keep that in the back of our heads. Other than that, this is all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you.
One last thing, Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
Ms. Matthews, you proffered about potentially doing this again. I agree. I think it's hard, and while I do care somewhat what the rest of the country is doing in our benchmark against them, frankly, I think it's more... are benchmark against them, frankly, I think it's more important as to where are we over time in terms of where we were, where we're going. And the only way we can know that is to do this on a consistent basis. So I, I think that is important. I would like to see us do this on some repetitive basis. Two to three years seems to make sense to me. What did this cost?
I think when we customized the reports, it was, I can double check tomorrow, but I think it was right around $17,000.
Right. Which sounds, to me, it's not chump change, but it's also not, not a lot of money to get a lot of really good information like this. And I think doing it every couple of years, to me, makes a lot of sense. And I think we should somehow try to, you know, look, someone is going to be here, you know, the next time this comes around, so we ought to try to get some consistency. I don't know how we do that. Do we, you know, could we make it a resolution that we do it, or do we just...
I think we just, I think we just do it.
Count on Ms. Matthews to remember.
Yeah, I'll remind you.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yingler.
Yeah, I'd like to also 100% support Councilman Chivaji in doing this. In any organization, you survey your customers, and you want to know what your customers want, need, and their concerns are. And these, our residents are our customers here. So I just want to make sure I identify, I'm on board with that.
And I might mention, I think part of the value of, there's two survey companies in the country that do most of the public sector surveys. One is National Research Center, the other is a company out of Kansas City. I think the benefit of the benchmarking and working with a survey company that has a big database is sometimes you can look at percentages that might seem low, but they're not low when you compare them to other jurisdictions across the country. So I think that just helps put some of the city's results in perspective, because sometimes just looking at straight percentages makes it seem like we're doing an awful job, and that's not the case.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor?
One thing I would like to say, just in case I'm one of those people that's not here next time, and I do, I do deal with statistics professionally, I think one thing that's important is, I don't know how this worked, I don't remember if this was put up to bid or whatever, but however we need to do it to make sure all factors that we can keep consistent are consistent. So it would make sense to actually stay with a similar, same company, get the same reports, have everything be the same, if, if our, if our plan is to compare. So I don't know how we go about that if this, someone has to go up the bid, but we need to heavily consider that in the process, because if we're going to, if we're going to compare notes, we need to be consistent.
Ms. Levann and I did talk about that as we were working on the contract. As I mentioned, the development of the National Community Survey was a collaborative effort with the International City County Management Association. As I'm an ICMA member, they did give discounted pricing to us, but I think because of the need, as the mayor indicated, to, to be able to standardize things, it was, it's just a very difficult item to bid out, because you're trying to develop questions that work for your community. So this fell below the threshold, but certainly we did look around, but this offered a very affordable way of being able to benchmark ourselves to other communities and allow some customization as well.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
May I ask a question?
You may.
Ms. Matthews, do we have a copy of that survey?
Yeah.
So we could keep it for the next time we want to do it?
Yeah, if you look at, it's in the, the technical report, which I believe was the last report that you all received as far as what was listed in the agenda packet. And in there is, at the very end of that is a copy of the survey itself that was sent to everyone.
And then just to follow up, I really do agree with Councilwoman Yingling that, you know, look at the results when we're at our retreat and think about that in implementing whatever or changes that could occur, to see how that may change the results the next time the survey.
Thank you. Mr. Dayhoff.
Have we technically done the survey before?
We, a couple, I'm not sure how many, at least two or three.
Yeah, I have copies of the previous survey.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, and obviously my tenure here is just a little under three years, I believe I have a copy of a survey that was done. I think the difference between the, the one survey I've seen, which I'm certainly happy to share with you all, there's a difference between the type of surveys where people just opt in voluntarily and when they're statistically valid. So a survey such as this was, basically, we looked at census, they looked at census information and made sure that there was a geographic distribution across the city. There was a balance between male and female respondents, different age groups. So I'll share the survey, Councilmember Dayhoff, that I've seen, but to the best of my knowledge, that was not a statistically valid survey. So you're going to...
So there's not going to be a comparison?
No, no. This was the first time the survey was done.
Okay. All right. All right. And we can have this, may we have the PowerPoint emailed to us, please?
Yes. Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
I'd like that. I'd like to study it. So I think we ought to do it every two years also.
Okay.
Well, we will...
We can, we have language and codes that will allow us to...
It does.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any further questions or comments on this? All right, very good. We will move on now to the consent calendar. We have three items before us tonight for approval. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
Okay. There's been a motion from Mr. Kavachi and a second from Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now we'll turn to our report for the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I won't be long. There's a lot going on in the city. We've had a lot of committee meetings, and it's been a lot, a lot, a lot happening, but nothing bigger than Fall Fest, which is upon us this week. Thursday through Sunday, we will be in a parade walking. We'll hopefully get good weather for the parade, but we'll, and for the rest of the festival, but I would like to say, I think this is going to be a really good Fall Fest. There's been some changes happening over time, the, the local businesses taking over what was once midnight madness, and that we have a lot of businesses involved this year. I think it's, it's close to, if not over 30. And I, I've been working with them and as a Main Street business, and it's been exciting to see the amount of people that are involved. And I think that's a real, I think, I think that move was a really good move, is where I'm getting at. I think it's, we'll see, we'll see when it happens, but I think midnight madness is going to be exciting. And, and there's a big pumpkin carving contest this year for the hospital that many of us have, have, have entered, and I'm glad I called Councilwoman Gilbert, because I was going to make mine the clock tower. And I hear yours may be the clock tower.
Does that mean we can compete?
I had to pivot, and I don't want to make everyone look bad. It's five versus one, and I win. But we, but I would like, I, I think, I think, I think it's good that we're all engaged, and I think other mayors from around the county entered in, and I think it's going to be a fun, a fun contest and a good cause. But I'm really excited about Fall Fest. It's, it's our biggest event here in the city, and that's, that's the end of my report, Mr. President.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Gilbert's leading the team on the, on the pumpkin carving for the council.
I do. I have wood burning equipment sitting on my, actually pumpkin burning equipment sitting on my dining room table, along with a little bit of carving material. So I don't know what it's going to end up looking like.
It'll look better than anything I would do.
I don't know. There very well may be a sign that sits beside the pumpkin that says, "That is why none of us are architects." So just be prepared.
Thank you for taking the lead on this, Ms. Gilbert. We appreciate it, all of us, I think. Reports from standing committees, Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. But I wondered, Mayor, do you want to mention the MML chapter meeting? Because that was a good meeting. Is that okay, Mr. President?
Yeah, well, you, whatever, whatever you'd like. Yeah, so I, yeah, it was, it was a really good meeting, and I'm sure Councilman Dayhoff can, can add to it, but, I mean, it was, it was packed. We had the school board superintendent there filling us in with, you know, what's going on. There's a lot going on with the school board. It's always good to hear about that. While the city does not really oversee anything in terms of, of education, it's a big reason why people live here, you know? So I think, I think it's something important we got to keep, keep our finger on the pulse of that. But it was, it was a good event. We had a lot of, a lot of people there, you know, it's, the local MML events, for those that you don't know what it is, it's a, it's an opportunity for local officials around the county, from all the municipalities, all the mayors, all the council members, and some staff that have kind of come together. And there's different agendas. Sometimes, you know, you, you talk about legislation that's happening in, you know, through our delegation. Sometimes you're, you're, you're just talking about maybe upcoming events, but this particular one, it was, it was heavily attended, and we talked about, there was a presentation by Mayor Shaw, Ian Shaw in Sykesville, who's, who's kind of head up the, our work together on the opioid crisis. And there's some things that he's doing, some pamphlets and some information that officers around the, the county are going to be handing out for, for people that need help and may, may not know where to find it. And I think it's a, I think it's a good plan, because, you know, the point that, I've heard him speak on it, I've heard Sheriff Dewey speak on it, he's involved, and, you know, the point that Sheriff made once that really stuck with me is, it's the officers that are, that are oftentimes with people when they hit rock bottom, and they have this, you know, they have some, it's some, some opportunity to, to have an effect on what they do from there. And, you know, who knows how, how big of an effect it's going to have? The point that Mayor Shaw makes over and over again is if, you know, we save one person, it's, it's worth the effort. So the, the mayors, minus me, because this started way before I was even elected, did a, did a lot of good work on that. And, you know, some of our delegation was there, some of the commissioners were there. It's, it's just a good way for everyone to talk to each other in a slightly less formal way.
Mr. Mayor? The brochure that the mayor was talking about was a collaboration with Partnership for a Healthier Carol, and it is a very thick, really nice book that highlights warning signs, also gives a ton of resources throughout the county. And I believe it is meant for the police departments and a lot of first responders to distribute, and they are available. You can ask Sykesville for them. I actually have a box of the pamph, of the brochures. I don't know if you've grabbed one additionally, but we can get more.
His truck was closer, I was parked like a perma...
I have two boxes in my truck, I forgot to bring them.
Yeah, if anybody here wants them or...
Yeah, we can grab and get them really quickly. It's done really well.
If you need some of your officers, we can, we can share them, but there's lots of them in lots of boxes. It was very well done. I kind of went through it yesterday.
I thought it was done, really well done, and we can, we can drop them off when we, with the fire department, when we respond. And I, I think that's good.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Yep.
What I was really impressed with, though, is that Carroll County Public Schools was represented at the meeting, the Carroll County delegation to Annapolis, all the municipalities, or essentially all the municipalities. And, and everybody, everybody gets along. I mean, we have policy differences, we have, we have, we have some differences of opinion, but, but it's, no other county works as well as Carroll County as far as all the various county government was represented, the commissioners were there. And if you go to, and I've been to some of the other quarterly meetings for some of the other counties, and nobody does it as well as Carroll County. It was just done really well. So.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dayhoff, would you like to do the Arts Council now?
Yeah, the Arts Council will be closed on Wednesday, September the 25th, for, for some, some cleaning and maintenance, and we will resume regular business hours on Thursday, September the 26th. And then coming up on September the 30th, there is a program titled "A Tell, Tale, Tale: Stories and Poems of Edgar Allan Poe." I was kind of fascinated with the description. This not-so-spooky and oh-so-hilarious performance by Bright Star Touring Theater celebrates Edgar Allan Poe's life and his most famous works. So that's coming up on September the 30th, and that will be the Arts Council report. Maybe at the next meeting, we had a cemetery meeting recently, and I should report upon that.
That'd be great.
And I'll do that at the next meeting. And then also, in full disclosure, I'm Secretary of the NAACP, and we've recently taken upon an initiative to memorialize sadly, we had one lynching in Carroll County in 1885, and we're going to do an historic marker so that we don't remember, so that we don't forget the name of Townsend Cook, who passed away in 1885. So there'll be more information coming forward on that also. We recently had a meeting to, to start putting that together a little bit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Yingler?
Yeah, I'll be brief. We received back four, I guess, inquiries about our request for proposal for redevelopment of the stock, excuse me, the stock sale property, or not specific that property, but in general, what it would look like to do an RFP. So I think Ms. Matthews gave that to us late Friday, so we haven't had a chance to go over it, but the Economic Development Committee is going to be meeting to look at those and then kind of formalize the next steps on, on that property, where we go. And that's all I have on that.
All right. Thank you. Just for the Finance Committee, the audit proceeds. Ms. Palmer can give us a little more information on that later on, but there's really not much else to report on that. Personnel Committee, Mr. Kavachi?
We're still looking for a Planning Department Director, and I know we're in that process with Matthews. I don't know if you're going to speak on that at all this evening, but I know we're ever slowly growing closer to hopefully wrapping that up. That's all I have for personnel, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Public Safety, would you like to go on?
So I have a number of things, Mr. President. We had a Public Safety meeting last week, and we discussed a number of items, three of which I'm going to touch on this evening, predominantly because I want to make all of you aware of it and make sure that you all have an opportunity to express either concerns or support for each of these items. And, you know, I don't know if we do that during council comment or at some other point, Mr. President, but I at least want to make sure the whole council's aware. So one of the ideas we spoke about was implementing some cameras downtown. We've talked about that a little bit peripherally. We're moving forward with making that happen. There, I think at this point, we discussed putting three static cameras in downtown and potentially one or two mobile units that can be moved around to hotspots. I'll let the chief get into a little more detail about it, but we're fortunate in that we can piggyback along with some work that the county's doing, where we're going to be able to reduce the cost of this, because we're going to be able to use some of their resources, service systems, and things like that. So really, what we need to do is mostly just get the cameras and put them in. And the great news on that is it, is it should not cost the city really anything out of our, our own budget. We're going to be able to do almost all of it, or all of it, through funds that have been collected for forfeitures by the front of us. So it's quite fitting that we'd be using it for that. Lacy Plate Reader Systems, we currently have one. We've had it for six or seven years. Is that right, Chief? Since 2012?
I believe 2013 is when it was purchased.
So we got that unit from Department of Homeland Security. They, they paid for it. When we implemented it at the time, and I was pretty vocal about this, we limited the amount of data that we were transmitting Homeland Security to a daily, we, we basically were not really giving them a lot of, or any data back, because at the time, I think there was some concerns about privacy and things like that. Obviously, a lot's changed in seven years. We all carry these things around, and it's pretty much tracks everywhere we are and what we do anyway. So there's some advantages to uploading that data live, and it, and the big advantage is we also get to download live data into the unit, which we currently don't do. Right now, they update it once a day, but if we go live with a unit where it's transmitting constantly, we'll get constant updates for, you know, anything that that unit can be looking for from a wanted, a vehicle that's, you know, being operated by a wanted individual to, you know, a silver alert, you know, amber alert, those types of things. So the committee has told the chief that we're in support of him going ahead and making that move to go live data. Maybe the state, if anybody has an issue with that, you know, speak now, forever holding peace. And we also agree with the chief that it would be a good idea to potentially procure a few more units. He talked about why they're so advantageous. It's a real force multiplier for the department, and we currently have one, so obviously, either that car is driven all the time, which is not necessarily the case, or it's only available all the time, which is not necessarily the case, or, um, it's only available in chunks of time. So if we add additional units, uh, they're permanent to the vehicle. Then once they're installed on the vehicle, they're, they're not like a handheld radar unit. They're mounted permanently in the vehicle. So we, uh, we felt, uh, we felt positive about him procuring another unit or two to potentially have enough so that every shift has an LPR out on the road. And again, the hope is that we can use forfeiture funds predominantly for that, or grants. There's grants out there and other ways in which we can get it. Um, so we, we felt good about telling him to move forward with that. Again, if, if anyone disagrees, speak up. Lastly, um, the, the last thing we talked about, and I know this is something that has come up from time to time. I know Councilman Yen and myself have brought it up a couple of times. I think we're finally going to get, you know, really moving on this, and that's, uh, looking at banning, um, truck traffic in downtown, particularly on Main Street and a couple of the s- adjacent streets to downtown. Um, obviously, there, there's some work that needs to be done with that. There's some research in terms of how do we do it? How do we enforce it? How do we make people know about it? Um, uh, you know, we, we don't want to just do it for the sake of doing it. We want it to be effective. Um, so there's some work that needs to be, be done, and the chief's been working on that. Um, but, uh, I, I, I think we're really going to start taking steps towards that. And so hopefully we'll have some type of legislation in the relatively near future that we can start looking at to, uh, to, to get these, uh, larger trucks predominantly off of Main Street. Um, so that's, uh, that's it, Mr. President.
Very good. Well, the truck issue's been one we've been grappling with for a long time, so I'm glad that the committee's.
Before you might enter, I'm sure.
Moving on that. I think on the other two items you mentioned, we either, if not formally, I think we tacitly approved, um, you know, the, um, the upload issue at a prior meeting. So, like, the chief's discussed that with us before. We'd all agree that we thought that that was, it was time to move forward with that.
I think you're right.
Um, on the, um, on the cameras, I don't know if we need to approve that or not, but I think, is, is anybody have any concerns about it before we, before the chief moves forward? All right, very good. So then, I guess, you know, without taking a formal action, the chief can, can move forward. Good.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Uh, Public Works Committee, Ms. Yen.
Sure. Just a couple of things. Uh, Public Works Committee met last week on short notice. Thank you for staff and my committee members for making that happen. Um, so it, uh, don't know if it was last council meeting or two meetings ago, there was some residents concerned about the, uh, the alley behind, uh, actually my neighborhood and Rock Salt. It's a very small alley. Some, uh, they were concerned about some of the truck traffic back there. Uh, there's some things, you know, saying that we, we needed to do something, and I wanted to make sure that we were doing something and, and we have. And, Ms. Matthews, if I miss something, can you chime in? Uh, you know, we had workers out there ago. We changed around some signage. Apparently, some of the trucks were cutting through the parking lot that Mr. Seronakis owns, uh, which was causing some issues. So we changed some signage around. Uh, they also, I think, we, we put in a camera to see kind of who the culprits were. Apparently, there's, uh, there's some issues with the trash trucks backing up and whatnot. Uh, so, so we were, we did take action to, to look at that, you know, and, go ahead. Do you look like you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to add, uh, Mr. Glass had spoken to the owners of Rock Salt about having their deliveries be made off of Main Street. They were extremely cooperative and have been working with us on that.
Right, right. Uh, but as, as we, and I'm not saying that we're not going to do anything else. What I'm saying is, uh, I think traffic flow is overall incredibly complex, as we're just talking right now about the truck traffic. Uh, so to say that we can fix this issue by making it one way or whatnot is, is just not, it's not entirely accurate. It's, it's a difficult problem, to which there's really no magic bullet that we're going to be, be able to do, uh, in the short term. But as we look at the, the overall, uh, transportation, you know, downtown, certainly that, I'm sure that area, among other areas, will be, uh, be heavily looked at. So, uh, so just wanted to make sure I gave you an update, update on that. Uh, two more things very quickly. Uh, Medford Quarry, we had a discussion on that. And there's kind of two facets to that. There's the Mayor Department of Environment, who's been a great partner, uh, with us, and has supported us in a lot of different initiatives. And then there's, you know, we don't own that quarry. Um, then you have Martin Marietta, who has also been a very good partner with us. And both the staff and Martin Marietta, in my opinion, have worked very efficiently together. And, uh, there, this is a, this is a complex discussion with Martin Marietta, with financial considerations for the city, and we need to be very diligent in that. And that's all I'm going to say about that right now. Uh, third is really, really good news. Uh, as you all know, we have an inflow and infiltration problem of, of basically clear water getting into the sanitary sewer system. But, uh, what we, we were able to do is we had had budgeted money out how many years, uh, to work on this problem, essentially relines the pipes and tries to prevent that, which it said, which it does is it reduces your flow into the sewer plant, hopefully giving you more sewer capacity. So we did a couple of big projects, and basically what Mr. Glass reported was in the last two months, I think it's two months, Ms. Matthews, correct me. Uh, and, and I will caution you, we have not had as much rain. So that is, that is a big factor in this. But our, our flow is down almost 900,000 gallons, right? Per, per, per day. So to put that in, well, how do you look at what you invest in this? Okay? So we spent, what, $2.5 million? So what, what do we get in return? Well, there was a, Mr. Glass came up with like kind of a little formula that said, how many, you know, benefit assessments could we get based on this flow, and how much a house would, would have in terms of, you know, how much, uh, water would they need? And, and I mean, the $2.5 million investment yields far, far, far more in that type of benefit assessment revenue in the tens and millions of dollars. So, I mean, that's not going to happen, but let's say you connected all the houses that conservatively, you know, you, so what I'm saying is the mayor's decision, Mayor Dominic, and his suggestion to frontload all that work is, is definitely paying dividends. And I'd like to thank him for that, but also thank the council for supporting that. It's something that, that has to be done. And it was very positive news to hear that. Did I miss anything, Ms. Matthews?
I think you covered it very well.
And that concludes our report.
Very good. Thank you very much. And, uh.
It was very exciting talking about sewer systems.
It is exciting. Well, it's, it's an important part of what we're doing here. And, um, I'm pleased that we were able to take a look at, uh, you know, what was happening in the alley there. Uh, and, uh, thanks to Mr. Glass who's not here tonight, and, and the Public Works team. Ms. Matthews, please let them know that we're glad they were so prompt in, uh, following up on that and making the changes they could. I think that's very helpful. Uh, it's time for, um, council comments and discussion. We'll just work our way down the table. Uh, Mr. Dale, anything else you'd like to add to what you've already said?
Um, yeah, if it's okay with you, I'd like to add on the, the Medford Quarry. I was around for the, uh, original, and as a matter of fact, you were also around for the original Medford Quarry negotiations. And they were very complex back in 2002, 2003. And, and I have heard from some folks in the community that, um, maybe they're not that complex to do an amendment and an agreement. And they're very, very complex, and we should be really proud of how well staff is working with MDE to, to, to overcome, uh, those complexities.
Well, Mayor, Mayor Ferguson at the time.
Yeah, led that effort and did a great job. And after we had the drought and we were suffering from, uh, lack of water. So it's, it's.
Yeah, in the end, it's a win-win for everyone. So, and, and I'm really happy with the return that we're getting on the, uh, the I and I project. We're getting a really good return off of that. And that's, that's a really important initiative for the Chesapeake Bay also. That'll be all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
No, I think everyone's covered everything.
Okay. Mr. Kavachi?
I've taken enough time, Mr. Gilbert.
And Mr. Yen?
Nothing for me, Mr. President.
Okay, I just wanted to add.
Certainly. This is a short one. I know this is, uh, the meeting's going on, but, um, so Councilman Yen made a comment about it being exciting, talking about sewer. And, uh, I'm, I'm guilty of saying that often, because we talk about water and sewer here more than just about anything. And from the outside, it may seem boring, but one thing I'd like to remind everyone that modern-day water and sewer might be the most important invention in the history of the world when you look at lives and illnesses, uh, you've saved. So I, I just, uh, I remind myself that when I, when I, when I sit there and I think, when I ran, I didn't expect I'd, I'd be talking about water and sewer 90% of the time that I'm doing anything in the city. But, um, when I, when I think about that, I think that that's, uh, that, that just reminds me that all the time and effort and headache and everything that it's causing that we're putting into this is, is well, is well worth it. But I, I think really when, when you run a city as a group, um, it should, it should be the basics. We should work on the basics, water, sewer, roads, safety. And, uh, and that's certainly what we've been working on. Thank you.
Thank you. And speaking of, of water and sewer, I just want to mention that, um, I want to thank, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kavachi, for attending the Board of Education meeting recently and making sure that the board understood, uh, the facts of life in terms of water and the construction of a, uh, a newer replacement, uh, East Middle School. I think that was an important, uh, you know, for them to get that information, to make that part of their, it's a huge apply. So thanks to both of you for attending and doing that. I think that was a very important stuff.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if you don't mind, uh, something I'd like to say, and I guess this is as good of a forum as any to bring this up. Um, I, I feel like some people there, it, it got a little hairy for a minute, and, uh, I was delivering bad news. Um, and I think some people felt like they were blindsided. And I don't think that should happen. I don't think that's our fault. I think that's just a, um, a miscommunication between large organizations. Um, and we should do something about that. I, I, um, you know, I, I think that maybe myself, someone else, all of us, we should, we should reach out to the county and set up some sort of information session where we all sit in a room together and have our staff really go through our water issues. Because I, we've been telling people that we have water issues for two years and that we're, we're working on it, but it's a long, long-term solution. Um, and I think now maybe, um, will be taken s- very seriously. And they, they, they see what we mean by water situation, and it's a good time to sit down and really go through the nuances of it, because that's what this came down to. It came down to inside city, outside city, which may seem big to us, but to the outside looking in at all the different complexities of this water allocation, uh, policy that we have. Um, it might be time to really dig in with everyone, especially with all the projects coming up. Um, but, uh, but yeah, I, I think, um, I also think that, um, our water policy's working, and it's, it's incentivizing the actions that we intended it to. Um, you know, I think, I think, I think we should look at it as a working policy, and, and there may be tweaks and changes that we make in the future to, to, um, you know, to, to make it a little better. But I think overall, it's doing exactly what we intended it to.
All right. I agree. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So let's move on. Uh, we have nothing on the agenda under unfinished business unless somebody can think of something that we need to, uh, to resolve. Uh, if not, we move on to new business. We have two items under new business. First is approval of mayoral appointments to boards and commissions of the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, all right. Tonight I'm asking for the common council to approve reappointments for, of certain members to the Historic District Commission, as well as the appointment of a new member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. My recommendations are outlined, uh, below. I think, does everyone have a copy of this? Everyone been able to review? So for the Historic District Commission, I'd like to, uh, reappoint Krista McMasters with a term expiration of September 23rd, 2022. Uh, I'd like to reappoint Dean Camlin with a term expiration of September 23rd, 2022. And I'd like to reappoint, uh, Mr. L. Kevin Wagner with a term expiration of September 23rd, 2022. And in Planning and Zoning, um, you know, Tom Rio informed us that he'd like to step down. Um, and, uh, he also had a lot of very con things to say about the city and, and the elected officials and his time on the commission. Um, but I think it's just his time, and, uh, he, he, he'll be stepping down. And I'd like to appoint, uh, Ms. Lindy McNulty with the term expiration of 2000, I'm sorry, September 23rd, 2024.
Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's take these, just the two different commissions. Uh, is there a motion on Historic District Commission?
A move to approve the Historic District Commission, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second from Mr. Dale to approve the mayor's appointments to the Historic District Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it, and the appointments are confirmed. Planning and Zoning Commission, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the planning and zoning, um, appointment.
There's been a motion from Ms. Gilbert. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion to approve the mayor's appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, from, um, by Ms. Gilbert, and a second by Mr. Kavachi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it, and the mayor's appointment is confirmed. We'll move on now to the next item, which is.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi, a motion for us.
On the statutory authority, statutory authority, closed sessions, the Maryland Etiquette Code, General Provisions, Article 3 dash 305B, Number 14, before a contract is awarded or bids are open to discussing matters directly related to the negotiating strategy of the contents of a bid or proposal, if public discussion or discourse would adversely impact the ability of a public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process.
All right, thank you. There's been a motion to go into executive session. Uh, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion from Mr. Kavachi, a second from Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it, and the council will go into executive session at the conclusion of its regular meeting. Departmental reports. Ms. Matthews, would you like to lead the departmental reports?
Sure. Thank you. Um, just a brief update on where we are with, uh, finding our next Director of Community Planning and Development. Uh, we have narrowed the field of candidates down to the, of those under consideration. Uh, those candidates have all received a questionnaire to give us a little bit more information to evaluate their candidacy. Uh, we'll be cutting that group probably in half. Um, the questionnaires are due, uh, by the close of business on Friday, September 27th. Um, we have gone ahead and scheduled, um, the interview day because we were lining up some planning directors to sit on the panel. Uh, so we'll be conducting interviews on, um, October 30th. Uh, so that process is moving along. Um, I also just wanted to share with you that we are making good progress on our due diligence for the stock sale property. Um, I received the, uh, survey results, um, last week, so that will enable us to, um, kind of put the finishing touches on the purchase contract and get that over to, uh, the settlement agent, who will then, uh, initiate the title search work on the property. Um, I also got an update from the firm we hired to conduct the environmental assessment. I anticipate that I'll have the Phase One Environmental Assessment Report, uh, back, do know later than next week, early next week. Uh, depending on what that says, uh, we'll determine at that time whether we need to have a Phase Two environmental done. Uh, but that's all moving very well. I'll continue to keep you updated between meetings, because I know how important it is. Uh, with that, I'd like to introduce Andrea Gerhard, who I'm not sure all of you have had the chance to meet. Uh, Andrea has been with us now not quite two months, have you? I think it's, time's been going by. Maybe it has been two months. Um, uh, but Andrea is our comprehensive planner too. Uh, very glad to have her on board, and so I'll let her do her departmental report.
Okay. So, um, just to inform you a little bit of the lot of things that our department has been doing recently. So we're, at our next planning commission meeting, we have an informal review that's going to be happening for the Conifer Property, the Westminster Way Apartments. So just wanted to inform you that that's coming down the line. We also, um, for BZA, there's a case 1906 that's going to be requesting a variance for 806 Windsor Drive for a detached garage. Um, we recently had our tree commission meeting, and just wanted to inform you that the urban and community forestry workshop was canceled due to lack of registration. Uh, I have recently completed our initial draft for the water and sewer amendment, uh, for the county's fall amendment cycle. I too get really excited talking about water and sewer. That's, uh, what I do. So that, um, sits on the desk of Mr. Glass. So whenever, um, he's available to take a look at it, we're going to be submitting that to the county. Uh, just also wanted to let you know that the city is being represented on various boards from our department as well. The Complete Count Committee, the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, as well as, uh, the East Middle Planning Meeting, which is happening tomorrow. So I'll be there for that one.
Andrea, thank you. Welcome to your first council meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Andrea had the distinction of having Mr. Mackey announce his, uh, that he would be leaving us on her very first, uh, I think her first week of work. Um, she told me that she really likes to get involved, and I told her that was great because she had a very short honeymoon period. Uh, but she and Mr. Gray have been wonderful to work with during this transition time. So Chief Lotwell.
Sure. So staffing-wise, um, we have our six newer, uh, police officers who are concluding their field training successfully so far. Um, they should be ready to go solo by the 1st of October. So with that happening, we are looking to fill the now vacant, um, task force position on the Child Advocacy and Investigation Center, and also the current vacancy on the County Drug Task Force, uh, along with a number of other transfers related to them going solo. Um, as mentioned earlier, we have a capital project for the, um, cameras in the current budget to be funded with forfeiture money. Uh, when we were looking at different requests for proposal, um, from other jurisdictions, I had a conversation with the sheriff, and he mentioned, um, their system. So since then, we've had several meetings and have, uh, looked at the potential to piggyback onto the county system, adding cameras in and using the county's servers. So we're currently, uh, still, um, in conversations, logistics and the planning is that, as, that being a potential option for us. Um, we did research the, uh, different, um, options moving forward if we were to add some signage restricting, um, vehicles based on size and on certain roads within the city. There are really two mechanisms to do that from a policing standpoint. One would be to train certain officers in commercial vehicle enforcement, which I don't think is. think is the best option when you look at effort versus reward. It's a lot of training, a lot of recertification, and then we would have to have those particular officers on hand when the violations occurred. Or the second option would be to place the signage with particular wording on it, and then observe a vehicle that was not making a local delivery, was driving through the particular restricted road, through the completion of that route. The biggest logistical issue, which I believe was brought up by several of the council personnel, was the, where do you put the signs? Thinking of all the different repercussions of rerouting traffic, you gotta make sure that you have an alternative route if you're gonna restrict routage on certain roads, so we're looking at all those different logistical issues moving forward. We've been successful in a number of our criminal investigations. Our night shift caught an individual who attempted to rob the Caromart on East Main Street, so they did a good job with that. We secured several arrest warrants for suspects that went into a Sprint store and stole multiple phones and watches. So, our Criminal Investigations Bureau did an excellent job in identifying and securing charges on them. We identified and secured an arrest warrant for an individual responsible for a theft of credit cards from one of the local gym locker rooms, where some locks were broken off some of the lockers. So, our Criminal Investigations Bureau did an excellent job in making that identification and securing an arrest warrant. And we identified and secured arrest warrants for two individuals responsible for several thefts from auto, where a wallet was stolen and some credit cards were used. Also, our Criminal Investigations Bureau was successful in that. We've continued to pair with the sheriff's office as a force multiplier in addressing crimes surrounding drug distribution, and we've had another successful operation last week, and we're continuing to plan together, the sheriff and I are having a conversation about moving forward and combining resources to be successful. So, got a lot going on right now.
Caromart, I seem really happy to have this luxury, I think, what was...
Okay, thank you, Chief. Ms. Palmer?
As most of you know, back in May, we lost about half of our staff to vacancies, retirements, and medical leaves. I'm very, very, very happy to report that we are back at full capacity. Our new hires are up to speed, we're in the process of cross-training backups, and everybody's back on the job, so it's very comforting to have everybody back in the seat and everybody's working hard. As Mr. Pecoraro mentioned, the audit is still ongoing, the auditors will be on site again this week. We are down to the single audit, which focuses on federal awards, which, for the City of Westminster, is namely our public housing agency. The city did receive the Government Finance Officers Award for Excellence in the Popular Annual Financial Reporting. That is a new report that we put out last year, it's the first time we've ever applied for the award, so I'm happy to report that we received it in our first year. It is a very condensed version of our comprehensive annual financial reports, which is a deep dive and technical. This report is namely used by people who are non-finance folks, so it's our financials at a glance for folks who aren't necessarily well-versed in finance. So, we were happy to publish the award, or the report, and super happy to get the award. Technology's been very busy as well. They have two major projects going on right now, their risk assessment for their DR facility, and then our GIS plans for both our water and sewer spatial systems has undergone their project, and they're on the job, and we hope to finish that by year end. That's all I have, President.
Ms. Felixisi?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I think that concludes staff's report, then.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Matthews. So, now it is time for citizens' comments, when we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. Please understand as we begin that the council is unable to discuss or specifically address your topic, or take specific action on citizen comments, citizen comment topics. Our intent would be to listen to your comments, discuss the issue with appropriate city staff, and either respond to you directly after the meeting, refer to the issue to a council committee, or place it on a future agenda for discussion. If you'd like to speak, please state your name and address for the city clerk. Anybody who would like to be heard tonight? Mr. Wagner?
L. Kevin Wagner, on 50th East Green Street. I walk around town a lot, so I want to personally comment about the Public Works and the great council, as they are preparing for Fall Fest, they do tremendous amount of work to gear up for the Fall Fest. As Ms. Mayor Dominic said, they do a great job, no, he said, if Fall Fest is a great event for the city, I totally agree, and we don't always appreciate all they do, they do tremendous amount. We have, maybe just me, but they don't always get the recognition they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, and you raise a good point, Mr. Wagner. I'll just say that, as the mayor said earlier, Fall Fest is and has been for many years our premier event. In town, we have other great downtown events as well, which I think have become really a tremendously important part of the city's character, and something that we never want to lose. I think the mayor and council are committed to seeing those events go forward, as I hope I'm speaking for everybody and taking the liberty of doing so, see those events continue to go forward, 'cause I think they've really, you know, changed the character of the city and will create a meaningful sense. Thank you very much for your kind words, for the city staff, for all that they do, as well as the volunteers who help so much with those events. Anybody else who'd like to be heard tonight? Okay, well, thank you all very much for coming. Meeting's adjourned, we'll reconvene in a few minutes for our closed session. Thank you.
She sold...
Hey, Mr. Mayor, you want me to get to the boxes or... What do you want to do with them?
Oh, that's probably in the place you found them.